Good evening. So tonight, we're honored to have an invocation guest is going to be Pastor Darrell W. Kozak that I would like to invite up to the lectern to offer the invocation. And before you do, Pastor, Councilmember Steiner wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, as Pastor Kozak makes his way up here, I did want to acknowledge him. About a month ago, he opened up Peace Lutheran Church on Ontario Avenue to the YMCA. And we had a nice grand opening there. And I just wanted to thank you because right now, I think we have 22 children who are now participating in activities and programming at Peace Lutheran. And I think the max is we're going to try to get up to 34, but 44, 44, awesome.
Looking over at my distinguished YMCA of CEO over there, Audrey, so.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's awesome that you're doing that. You know, you definitely are helping to fill a void in this community. And we wanted to just thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. As we move from getting here to being here, I would invite you to, to close your eyes maybe for a moment of silence as we kind of center ourselves for, for being here this evening. Let us pray. Oh God, whom we call by a variety of names, we give you thanks that we can gather here and celebrate this city of Corona, which we call home. We ask your blessings upon its people and its places, its, its places of worship, its schools, its, its businesses, all the people who live here and make this their home. We give you thanks this night. Lord, especially as we gather this evening, we ask your blessings upon our elected officials. We ask you to be with each of them as they have been entrusted to this, this work on behalf of our citizens. And we ask you to continue to give them, to give them patience, to give them diligence and work and faithfulness in their work. And especially God, we ask you or give you thanks that they have been dedicated, that they have set this time aside and are dedicated to this, this work that they do on behalf of us. As we give you thanks and praise in your name, we pray. Amen. If you'll please remain standing and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and the United Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every means, justice, or all.
Okay, so we have, have one proclamation, recognition, and presentation tonight. But before I do that, I'd like to convene our open session. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to City Clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the City Council. Please observe a three-minute time limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. So tonight, we have a presentation of our military banner. And I would like to invite Jaylen Edwards to the podium to receive his banner. So Jaylen, or did you go by Jay? Jaylen. What branch did you serve in?
U.S. Navy.
U.S. Navy. What, you want to tell about your time?
Sure. My first.
Put you on the spot, sorry.
I appreciate it. It's okay. So my first four years, I did special programs. I was an air warfare operator. The last two years, I was a firefighter supervisor and a security supervisor. Did three deployments. I just did two of the longest deployments in U.S. naval history, back to back. And I'm actually honored to be here. This is my city I grew up in. I'm glad you guys did this for me. Thank you so much.
Well, we're honored to do it for you. Can we take a picture really quick? Jaylen, if you, if you are interested in a career in either fire or police, both of our chiefs are here, and I know we're hiring. So, and we love our vets. So I'm sure we'll, I'm sure it's a good opportunity for you. Okay, so let's see. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for our presentations?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Moving on to our meeting minutes, the study session meeting of July 19th, 2023, and the City Council meeting of July 19th, 2023. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Please vote. That item passes five to zero. Moving on to our consent calendar. All items listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A council member or any member of the public or person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Do my colleagues have any items that they'd like to pull?
Yes, Mayor, seven, please.
Number six.
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have one for agenda item seven.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. So these are going to be for items five, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Please vote. Okay, those items pass five to nothing. Okay, council members, speak on item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ellis, I just think this is a really cool technology. I'd love to hear talked about a little bit. That would be okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna ask Chief Newman to maybe give us a little update on that.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about this new technology that we're going to be bringing to our city. Back in 2019, believe it or not, I wrote a grant asking for artificial intelligence to provide an enhanced service to our investigations team. It was a product that we were looking for, and we ultimately landed with a product named BriefCam. It's being sold through Convergent. And in 2019, we submitted the grant. In 2022, the grant funds were awarded. However, the RFP process went through a couple of times. And here we are now, successful in its conclusion. With this, and with the three years that it's been, when we first viewed the product, it has enhanced even more. And that's a benefit to this. So not only is it going to be a tool for the police department in reviewing videos, it's a post analytic tool. And what it brings to us is there's a certain, there's an investigation that I have in the top of my mind. We spent 25 hours watching videos. We had a detective watch a TV screen for a certain vehicle for 25 hours, found the vehicle, but 25 hours later. We ran that same bit of information, tons of video, hours and hours of video, through this technology. In two hours, it found what we were looking for. And not only did it find the video of the vehicle, but it showed time, direction, speed, which actually is a huge piece of evidence that enhanced the investigation for us. So we partnered with the information technology with this because those three years actually increased the cost. And this is going to be tied into our, our future camera system because Public Works is also interested in this because it can help with the speed, direction, and travel determination through artificial intelligence and speeding, providing that information, not only for post analytics for police department, but for our Public Works team as well.
That's great. Yeah, I just read about it and got some information. I asked some questions, thought it was very valuable and good to hear how we're, police work is pushing on the edge of, of AI technology. So it's good to see it. Thank you. That's all I had.
Would you like to make the motion?
I would.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, that item passes. Five to nothing. All right. So we had two people, or Councilmember Casillas and the public. Did you want to go first, Councilmember Casillas, and then we'll listen to the public?
Well, I, really what I think is appropriate for this item is a staff report. So that's why I pulled it. This is a big, it's a big infrastructure project that we're all keeping tabs on. And this is a big amendment. So I would like a staff report.
Absolutely. The team's ready to present that now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Casillas, Mayors, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. And just to give people a little bit of background on the project, I'm going to go ahead and go over a little bit of the history and where we're at today. So as you may know, the city, the city's McKinley Grade Separation Project has been in the work for several years now. And in order to improve safety at the existing at-grade intersection at the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks and McKinley Street, the project will improve safety by providing a bridge over the tracks, eliminating train horns, wait times, and conflict for pedestrians, commuters, and emergency access vehicles. The project has commenced construction for some time now, and I'd like to provide you with the following project status updates. So although, although it may not appear that the project is progressing, a lot of underground and foundational work has taken place, particularly as it pertains to utilities. The public may not be aware, but the project is located in an area that is serviced by multiple jurisdictions and located within city and county limits. All dry utility relocations such as SoCal Gas, Southern California Edison, and AT&amp;T, sorry about that, it looks like I went ahead of myself there, and AT&amp;T are completed. Riverside Public Utilities Water Lines are completed, whereas the Western Municipality, there we go, Water Lines are currently in progress, south of Sampson. And the city's Wet Utilities located north of Sampson are currently in progress right now. So currently, four piles are constructed and column construction is in progress. Retaining walls are currently being formed and poured on the west side, north of Sampson Avenue. And what you also don't see in progress is the fabrication of the steel bridge that is in Vancouver, in the state of Washington, not Vancouver, Canada, but Vancouver, the state of Washington. The work is 70% complete, and we expect the bridge sections to be shipped starting this November. The right-of-way acquisition process, although it has not impacted on the, on the construction, is still underway with the following statistics and updates available on the city's website. Our economic development team continues to interact and highlight businesses in the area impacted by the construction. They have targeted businesses promotion by providing monthly newsletters and putting businesses in the spotlight through these newsletters, as well as through social media. They have programs available to businesses to subsidize training and promote live work in Corona. They offer funding opportunities through grants for small businesses and focus on business resilience, education, and support. The project team also continues to provide public outreach as the project progresses. Since 2020, we have provided virtual presentations accommodating pandemic restrictions and have also provided dual virtual and in-person meetings, offering coverage and accessibility for everyone. The next virtual in-person meeting is October 3rd in 2023, here at the council chambers. And a list of our routine public outreach efforts are provided on the screen, which includes the text, texting program, the bi-monthly public notifications and broadcast, a hotline number, project email, and interactive maps on our website that also include area drone, time lapse, and ground photography. So what's next? To keep the project moving, we are presenting before you today two separate amendments to our design engineers, Biggs Cardoza Associates, and our program and project manager, Mark Thomas and Company, to continue to provide additional design, right-of-way and construction support services, such as the Caltrans permitting process, answering Q and A's and addendums, as well as to explore continuous value engineering services provided and an overall, to provide an overall cost savings to the project, as well as, as we are all aware of the complexities of this project. Some of the examples of the cost savings are listed here and also detailed in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. And if I could be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Sure. So can we speak a little bit to the extension of time, why, why there's been such a need for it?
The, the delays have primarily been with materials. We've had issues with procuring materials. And also, there were some, some logistics issues with, with the manufacturing and the steel manufacturing. Some other things include coordination with the utilities, with right-of-way agencies, and, not right-of-way agencies, but with also utility agencies as well.
And, and procuring these materials, that was because of the pandemic, correct? Is that the thing that's happening, like nationwide? Is it just us? Is, are other people experiencing that same delay?
It's us and also nationwide as well. It also affects other projects in procuring materials. As an example, even our typical streetlights, it takes about 52 weeks just to procure the materials from vendors sometimes.
In hindsight, is there anything that we could have done to have tried to speed up that process?
We did try our best. Even during, in the beginning, we had tried to, tried to thwart this by waiting a little bit. As you may have known, steel prices had spiked at a certain period. And we actually delayed the project on purpose, even before the bids, for about three to six months.
And this project, the, the, how complicated it is, I know that when we first started off, it was best practice essentially to have outside assistance to project manage. In your professional experience, Mr. Kumpu, is this still the case? Like, would this be something that we could manage internally at this point? Or do we still need the assistance?
No. In a very complex project like this, we, we need the experience of expertise. As an example, even coming from Caltrans, when we ask agencies whether they have the expertise to run a project of this magnitude, we typically require them to have many, many years of experience. And this city probably would be better off using consultants with such expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Kumpu. Look, this is, this is, this has been a complicated and necessary infrastructure project from the beginning. And I know that, you know, from the very start, when we had, you know, the several months of the value engineering project, when we redesigned the project, and when we were recommended to move forward with a hands-on management company, we knew that it was going to be difficult. What we didn't anticipate was a pandemic. And what the pandemic did to, what is it, the supply chain of materials. That's not everything, but that, what I'm hearing is that's a big part of the time extension. So, yeah, this is complicated and necessary, and we're right in the thick of it. So, thank you, Mr. Kumpu. Appreciate it.
I think it's important to note that, I mean, gosh, if we had a crystal ball that we could determine prices and overlays and whatnot, we'd never have a project that went askew again.
Agreed.
And we'd be, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, you know, it is, it is a part of the construction game. So.
And we've pledged from the beginning essentially to, to be open and transparent about this process. And we've had and continue to have quarterly updates. And what I do appreciate are the routine communication engagements, the text messages, the community meetings. There's, there's no way to get past it but through it, is where we're, where we're at.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. And I think we had someone, we had a speaker card from the public on this topic as well, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Please come on down.
Morgan 2063, yeah, got it. If only somebody would have told you that you didn't have enough money to build this when you're building it. If only there would have been somebody, perhaps, that might have perhaps come to this podium and said that you didn't have enough money to build it. And maybe that somebody heard plenty of assurances at the time that there wouldn't be any general fund money put into this. Now it's up to $7 million plus that's been put into it. You know, it's 25% increase. And I just love, it's like deja vu all over again. It's like Foothill, where you, it's, it's, I call it Peggy Bundy math, where you, you pay somebody for finding things that they should have found in the beginning. So you can't value engineer and then get credit for value engineering, something that you engineered. You know, Biggs Cardoza designed this mess. They were kind of the bottom of the barrel, and they charged a lot more money than anybody else, you know, but, you know, it was a mess to begin with. It's a mess now. And now they're getting credit for finding $2.8 million in savings in a project that they designed. So it means that they designed a project that was more expensive than it needed to be. So when they said they built the best project, they didn't build the best project. If they can then take out $2.8 million, and then to give them money back to redesign the thing that they messed up on, is pretty circular to me. You know, it's just really wrong. You know, and then you hire the same people that completely screwed over the city on the 91 project. It's quite literally the same company on the same type of project. I can't wait till this bridge falls apart like all the other bridges they built falls apart. I mean, it's, it's just sick. And, and, and to blame whatever on material costs, there's no material costs in this. I didn't see anything about that. What I saw was uncertainty over property. Well, yeah, you got a lot of uncertainty because you seized every single property through eminent domain. So, yeah, so they're going to court, and it's not a negotiated settlement. You didn't have enough time to build it, and that's why it's spiraling out of control. This isn't unforeseen. This was very foreseen. You know, you're building the most difficult thing on the most compressed timeline. And, and of course, it's going to be a goat rodeo. Of course, it's going to cost more. Of course, everybody's going to go up 25%. I can't wait to see the increased bill for the materials. That's, yeah, I get part of it's not, part of it's pandemic related, but this isn't, this bit tonight isn't. You know, you still haven't settled with the biggest property owner down there. The only person actually really lost any property, you haven't settled with them. You know, it's, it's a joke. You know, you whack a whole thing in half, and then the staff's trying to stiff arm them over getting a sign. You know, it's just, it's a comedy of errors, this whole thing. And it was destined to be that right from the beginning. And it was destined because the city wanted to spend the money, and they wanted to do it rather than doing the right thing. We didn't have time to do it right, but we committed to a timeline that was based on a lie. And you're just continuing the scam just like it was.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, we do have one more speaker card for this item.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Don Fuller. I'm a resident. What Mr. Morgan said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, there you go.
Nobody pushed a button.
I was waiting for the motion to be pressed.
Failure at the top.
My screen didn't allow it.
Yeah, okay. That's what I said.
Okay, that item passes five to nothing. Okay, moving on to communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute time limit for comments. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have three speaker cards and five written comments.
Five written comments. Why don't we read the comments first?
Okay.
My name is Sandra, and I was the owner of 3850 Wasatch Drive years ago. My late husband and I purchased a home after falling in love with the quiet and beautiful neighborhood. I was very sad when a friend recently reached out and let me know that my home was now an Airbnb and basically a party house. I cannot understand the draw. Wasatch Drive is not near any vacation destination. To say it is close to beaches or amusement parks is a flat-out lie. The only reason someone would rent it is to party. The community was always peaceful when we lived there. Kids played in the greenbelt, and people walked their dogs in the early evening. Everyone was always nice, and neighbors helped each other out when the need arose. It makes me extremely sad to know that some greedy human is destroying the community, not to mention lowering property values for the current homeowners. After all, who wants to live near a house that constantly has random renters and tons of vehicles parked everywhere? I do not know what can be done to change the situation, but clearly something needs to be done. Just ask yourself, would I want to live in that scenario? Please consider the rights of the residents of Wasatch Drive and the surrounding community over the one person who purchased the home with the sole intent of renting it out for parties. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Sandra.
Hello. It has been so nice to have, having the Wasatch motel empty, although it's still very uncomfortable knowing these organ owners still own it. The front yard looks a mess of brown grass. The mailbox has been broken about a month. Strangers continue to show up in the middle of the night in the driveway and possibly trying to steal the mail. The police have been called. We don't need or want them renting it long-term. We feel bad they're trying to cheat people with their current overweight market, park, market asking price. Have they not looked at the comps? They're over $2,000. We don't need any motel activity in a residential neighborhood. The city is not set up to manage this. If they do a 30-day minimum or other minimum stay, who will manage it? What if someone stays for less time? What if they're over occupancy? Nothing good can come from this. And again, it puts a burden on the neighborhood to report everything. Please give us our lives and our neighborhood back. Thank you.
Good evening. We've noticed the Wasatch motel has had their mailbox stuck open for about three weeks. They have set up the neighbors for retaliation from previous party renters. We've truly had enough of them inviting strangers and possible criminals to our neighborhood. The police have come out at least twice this last couple of weeks because their mailbox has drawn so much attention and invites mail theft. Strangers were hanging around the mailboxes and snooping in driveways and vehicles in the middle of the night. This is just cruel what they have done to a quiet residential neighborhood. We are still requesting a full ban, please, on these house motels in all residential neighborhoods in all of Corona. We don't want anyone else to go through the emotional distress that they caused us. This is so inappropriate and unnecessary and just fueled by their greed. Now they seem to have the house listed for a long-term tenant at 2,000 overmarket value. They are still trying to do this with no agent and no management company. This is just ridiculous and cannot be managed from Oregon. We would love comps to be high, but they're just trying to steal from innocent people with such a ridiculous rent. Please help us. It's time for them to sell and move on. We will help them pack. Thank you.
Hi. It seems these organ owners are trying to rent their home for over 2,000 with What they should be asking for, who are these unreasonable people? The same house rents for 3,800, and they're asking for 5,900. A pool is not worth more than $2,000. They've shown such a lack of interest into the neighborhood for almost a year. No way are they trying to, trying to ever manage this property properly. They can't even fix their mailbox closed. This is just terrifying to possibly be stuck with them if someone actually pays such a rip-off rental price. Please have them take this elsewhere. We wish them the best of luck and hope they get the high-market value to sell it. It's time for them to move on, please. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. We respectfully request a complete ban on all short-term rentals in the city of Corona. It just destroys neighborhoods. If you won't allow a Holiday Inn on Wasatch, then there's no reason to allow the Lewis Party Motel. It belongs in commercial areas or possibly resorts and tourist areas only. Please help it get it closed. Thank you very much.
Is that all of the letters?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. And I think we have some speakers?
Good evening again. This is Joe Morgan, 2063, Ren. I just want to say thank you to Peace Lutheran. It seems like there's some, some churches in the city that actually take their religion seriously and, and give back to the community. You know, there's some that are, they're, they're, they're there. Once there's a need, they step up, and this is one of those, this is one of those, one of those organizations, and I want to thank them. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I hope everybody's having a good time tonight. I just want to remind a little project that occurred, and my message is to those people who will quite often say it doesn't pay to go to city council meetings if nothing ever happens anyway, it doesn't do any good to speak up about anything. And so that message is not so much for the folks in the council, but for anybody who's listening in with that. And a few months ago, I started, I came in here a couple of times and talked about some really bad spots in the pavement in that piece of road that goes from the southbound 71 to the eastbound 91, where it goes underneath the, the underpass over there near the Prado Dam. And there were some really bad potholes in there, and there were tire busters and wheel benders and that sort of thing. And I made a mention of it a couple of times. And by and by, Mr. Khampu, the Public Works Director, he came up and he approached me about that and asked me about it. So we had a conversation about it, and then he informed me that he had gone out and driven through there and taken a look at it. Then he went and he told some other people about it. And if you will notice, there are now patches on that section of pavement. Mr. Speaker is nodding his head up and down. Mr. Richards has got a little smile on his face. See, there's now some patches there. And the patches are not wonderful. They're temporary. I understand that because that road's going to be completely redone, but they're better than it was. So I have talked to Mr. Khampu about that, and I'm enough of a blazing self-centered narcissist that I'm going to take credit for that thing being better than it was. And if people would come in and speak up a little bit, then they might get a little bit of action on some things. It's guaranteed that if you don't come in and speak up, you're not going to get any action on it. So maybe I've saved some people a few bucks on blown-out tires or just some nuisance. And if it's not as smooth as they would really like it, if it's not just nice and velvety, it'll get better, but it is better. So I'm just talking all those people that say it doesn't pay to come in and yak at you folks up there. In this case, it did pay, and the roads are a little bit better. And I understand next week we're going to have a sign out there that calls out the Don Fuller Memorial Patch Job or something like that. So that's all I wanted to say. Tell people to get in here and put up their two cents worth. Thank you very much for your time.
Don, I just wanted to say thank you. I did talk to, after you spoke about it here, I did speak to several folks at RCTC and passed that on to their group, and, and they weren't aware. In fact, they didn't, there was a miscommunication that Caltrans thought that they were, you know, they thought that RCTC was going to do, RCTC thought that Caltrans hadn't released that area yet. And because of your diligence, that was highlighted and fixed, so.
Diligence is a nice way to characterize my behavior, but.
I like diligence.
So that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Finaldi, South Corona resident. So, made it a little late today. I wanted to speak on the subject of the McKinley Bridge and the additional services to Big Scardozza. It's interesting that you guys just approved, and that's okay. I expect, I think we needed to approve it to keep the job moving, so don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But you approved a 10% increase in their fee. The big chunk of it was, I briefly read it, I didn't study it closely, but the big chunk of it was for construction administration services, replying to RFIs. Yeah, part of it was also value engineering, which should be done before construction. It could be done during, as things come up. However, was there not any construction administration time in the original $12 million contract? You'd think there would be. It usually is in any of the projects I get involved in. So what happened? Why are they getting? By the way, construction administration in my world usually is around 10% of my contract. So it seems to me like none of it was in there in the beginning. Who missed that? Or am I wrong? It was in there, and now it's just an increase? I don't know. But I think things need to be dug a little deeper, my opinion. Anyway, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there any more cards, Ms. Edwards?
Mayor, yes, I have two more cards.
Hello. Since I have the wrong glasses on, I'm going to have to just speak from my heart. Many of you know that my husband's been sick, and we've had to call Corona Fire a few times. And I just want to express my sincere thanks to the professionalism in putting me in my place and saying, no, we need to take him to the closest hospital. And in doing so, he went to Corona Regional, but he got the best care, the best care. Within an hour, blood's in him, he's in machines. He did really, really well. And I was one of those that did not like Corona Regional, but I had no reason to. So I have to eat it and say Corona Regional did a great job, and so did the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, the last speaker card is for Agenda Item 19.
Okay, yep. Moving on to public hearings then. Item number 16, the public hearing and election for annexation number 35 into Community Facilities District Number 2016-3, Maintenance Services. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. This item is being continued to allow staff to advertise the item. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is.
So that will be continued to the public hearing of the city council meeting on August 16th. Moving on to administrative reports. The Fiscal Year 2023 Quarter Four Budget Update and Strategic Plan Progress Report. Julie Cunnicutt, Budget Manager, and Jacob Ellis, City Manager, will present this item. Present away.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie's going to take the first part of this, and we'll tag team, and I'll take on the second part. Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have before you the Quarter Four Report for Fiscal Year 2023. As we just discussed, I will be presenting the Quarter Four Budget Update, and then I will pass it over to Mr. Ellis, who will present on the Strategic Plan Implementation Progress Report and the Operational Performance Update. One of the things you'll hear me say a couple of times throughout this presentation is that these numbers are not the final figures of Fiscal Year 2023. It's just where we are as of right now in Quarter Four. The information that you are seeing will change through the year-end and audit process. We'll start off by going over the General Fund. This consists of the General Fund, Measure X Fund, Historic Civic Center Fund, and the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. Some highlights of the inflows from the General Fund. Through the fourth quarter at this point, we have received approximately 98.4% of our estimated revenue as compared to 97.1% last year at Quarter Four. For Measure X, we received $35.5 million so far. Regular sales tax, we've received 40.8, I'm sorry, 48 million so far, and we're expecting those final payments a little bit later this month. Taking a look at a couple of categories and where we are now as compared to this time last year, we're seeing an increase of 12% or 6.7 million in property tax, primarily from secured property tax. Fines, penalties, and forfeitures, we'll see an approximate 10.2% increase. This includes items such as library fines and administrative fines and penalties. There is a decrease of 55.4% in intergovernmental revenues, and the reason for that is the reduction in fire mutual aid reimbursements and other grant revenues that were originally anticipated. Now, taking a look at the Quarter Four actuels as compared to the fiscal year-end projections, through the end of June, the fiscal year is now complete, and 98.4% of the projected revenues have been received. Due to the timing on some items, not everything follows a regular trend, and as mentioned before, during the end of the year and audit process, these numbers will change. Usually by the end of August, when we get the final property tax payments, sales tax payments, and accruals finished, those are the bigger ticket items that aren't seen here just yet. This is a snapshot of the General Fund sales tax. You can see the totals for Fiscal Year 22 on the left, and with three full quarters received in Fiscal Year 23, the current total is just over 54 million. The current receipts are 21.5% higher than this time last year. And then right there down at the bottom, we've updated the projected estimate, so you can see we've received 95% of our estimated, estimated revenue. This is the same layout for Measure X Fund. Now that we have a full year to compare to, you can see the totals of Fiscal Year 22 on the left. And again, with three quarters received, we're at 41.1 million. We are up by 37.6% over the prior fiscal year. And again, down at the bottom, we've updated that projected estimate, so you can see we have received 91% of the estimated revenue so far. Any questions on inflows before we move on to outflows?
I do actually have one question. Could you go back to Slide 6, please? So right there where it says investment earnings, so through, through Quarter Four, we're at 10.2 million, and we had projected 3.6, so we're up 282%. Is that because we have a city manager, or city, sorry, not a city manager, city treasurer that is really good at what he does?
So on the investment earnings, those are the book entries that are made when we have gains and losses on the investments. So that's what makes the increase looks like it's skyrocketed. It's just because of the timing of those book entries.
So it's not because our city treasurer is really good at what he does?
He does a great job for us.
He's great too, but.
We're going, we're going to go ahead and give Chad credit for that one anyway. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. You'll blame that on the city manager.
Okay, moving on to the General Fund outflows. The cumulative budget is 210.7 million, and through June, 79.9% of the budget has been spent. We like to show anything with a variance of 10%, so we have highlighted the departments that have spent less than 90% so far. Most departments are trending lower due to the PERS unfunded liability payments. Although it was a great thing for the city, it just messes up the trends for a while because of the way we have to report it and that those charges are no longer recorded in each department. They have now shifted to the debt service payments. We have savings and vacancies, contractual services, and of course, the multi-year capital projects where any of the balance in those projects will carry over into the next fiscal In this slide, we highlight four of our General Fund reserves: emergency contingency, budget balancing, pension stabilization, and the Measure X reserves. Emergency contingency is equal to three months of operating expenditures adjusted at the end of each fiscal year. Budget balancing is a unique reserve for the city, and it's been in place for at least 20 years. But starting in Fiscal Year 22, we no longer add any new money to this reserve at the end of the fiscal year. And also in Fiscal Year 22, $30 million was transferred to the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. That was due to the adoption of the Pension Management Plan and moving that 30 million from budget balancing measures. These funds are now in a trust and can only be used to fund pension-related costs. The Measure X reserves is a new reserve at the end of Fiscal Year 22, and each fiscal year, any unspent Measure X funds that don't roll into the next fiscal year will go into the reserve. The reserve amount will be discussed with council each year through the budget cycle. As of right now, we show a total of 99 million in reserves, but again, that can change throughout the year-end process for any surplus that gets added to the bottom line. Moving on to the utility funds updates. Again, just like mentioned previously, these are not final numbers and will change throughout the year-end process, but overall, the projected revenues through Quarter Four is at 91.4% received. Last year, we were at 89.7%. Some of the highlights on the inflows comparing this fourth quarter to Quarter Four last year. Looking at the funds individually, electric is increasing by 2.6%, largely due to current services, which includes plan checks, fines, penalties, and forfeitures, and other revenue and investment earnings. Water is seeing the largest increase of 21.5% or $14.5 million. This is due to the intergovernmental revenues or reimbursements, other revenue, a one-time settlement, and investment earnings. And then lastly, sewer is also seeing an increase by 1.8 million. This is due to fines, penalties, and forfeitures, investment earnings, and license fees and permits such as capacity fees. This snapshot is of the cumulative budget compared to the projected estimate, showing that 99.5% of revenue received. Some highlights of the outflows. They are at 45.9% of the budget that has been spent. Electric is at 75.2%, water at 42.3%, and sewer at 42.2% spent. You can see that for each of the categories, the CIP budget spent is trending really low, and that is because of the multi-year projects. So those expenditures don't follow the trend with our quarterly reporting. But as for the operating budgets, they are trending low to personnel vacancies and timing issues on various materials, supplies, and contractual services. This snapshot is the cumulative budget to actuals information, similar to the previous slide, but broken down by fund type and department. Overall, outflows in utilities compared to the cumulative budget at Quarter Four is The reserve, the reserve policy for utilities department operating funds was approved by city council on May 18th, 2022. Commencing with Fiscal Year 2022, the target reserve amount for each of the operating funds shall be set at 90 days. To build the target reserve amount, the utilities department shall annually contribute 10% of the difference between actual operating revenues and actual operating expenses for each of the utilities department operating funds each fiscal year until the target reserve is met. Depending on the fund, it will take time to hit the target reserve amount. The reserve process will occur annually once the audit and financials are finalized. That concludes my portion of the presentation, unless you have any questions for me. If not, I will turn it over to Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Cunnicutt. Any questions? No, continuing to put the fun in funds.
Don't use that word.
When it's a dad joke, you're allowed to use it more than once. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing on, I'm going to be pinch-hitting tonight. Donna Finch, who usually does these, has been reassigned to other duties, so I'm older, I'm uglier, but I was available, so I'm here tonight. Just to jump into the plan, you're all familiar with it. We have one vision, one purpose, six values, six goals, 21 objectives, 138 strategic actions, and 125 performance indicators and milestones. We're all familiar with our community's vision, which is to be a safe, vibrant, family-friendly community, and we are unified in our purpose to create a community where everyone can thrive. We're led by six values, six goals, and I'm here to talk to you about the progress that we've made in Q4 of Fiscal Year 23. And I want to point out again, we're very proud that all of this information is now available on our website. If you look up our strategic plan, we use Invisio as a software platform. So as I go through these slides, you'll notice they look, you can almost get a tinge of fuzziness because we've pulled them right off our website. So whether you watch this meeting tonight, or you'd like to go and peruse this at your leisure on weekends and other evenings when you've got friends together and you'd like to do something exciting, Wes, you, you have this as an opportunity to go through all of these numbers whenever you'd like. So we're very pleased to be able to. So we're very pleased to be able to offer that.
I think Councilmember Speak actually does this at dinner parties.
I do. I do. It's a party trick.
And we appreciate the interest. But we're really pleased with that. And so that really is an enhancement to what we're doing. It's automating this more for us. So just to jump in, I'm just going to do the highlights here. We have finished yet another year of zero-based budgeting, identifying potential cost savings and cost containment opportunities. We've established a grant funding tracking mechanism in our finance department. Of course, we're continuing to manage the city's pension liability debt. We're utilizing our strategic plan to guide our future financial decisions. And we are continuing to increase the percentage of services funded via external sources. All of the data that you now see here, I'm not going to go through each one, but they are all available on our website. And you can watch how we're trending and how each individual indicator is doing. And we, of course, do this year-over-year comparing fiscal year 22 Q4 to fiscal year 23 Q4. Moving on to our economic development work. We are on track to create a development handbook that explains the review and approval process to try to continue to make us more business-friendly. We are partnering with regional workforce development boards to increase job opportunities. We're continuing to review and update the city's purchasing process, always a work in progress. But it's one of those things that we're committed to doing and improving that to do a better job of how we go out to secure both goods and services. More data for our economic development dashboard. Again, we didn't have some of these available at the time that this was created a year ago, but we are now tracking these going forward. Talking about sound infrastructure, we've now revamped our capital improvement plan for the city. We adopted that this year. Very pleased to see that's now over a 10-year horizon that allows us to be better prepared for federal funding opportunities as they arise. We are right on the cusp of finishing our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that's going to be reviewed here shortly with council. Same goes for our Trails Master Plan, and really pleased with the community engagement in both of those processes. And we're excited to be able to bring those to completion here in the next couple of months. We are now launching into our asset management program for all of our city infrastructure. I think we had to go out something like three or four times to find the right person for this job. They're now on board, and we've begun that. And we're excited to really build that plan out. That is fundamental to cities being sustainable financially is knowing what your infrastructure is and how you're going to pay for it in the long term. So excited to get that going. And we're continuing work on modernizing our traffic cameras and implementing that artificial intelligence option that we allocated ARP funding for a year and a half ago.
Mr. Ellis, on this page, the trends, there was a slide, a few slides back. What the arrows going down and the color code, what does that indicate?
Red is bad, green is good. So if you see a trend going down and it's green, that's because we want that particular number to go down. That would reflect something good. And sometimes when a number goes up and say it could be a crime statistic and it's pointing up, that's red because we don't want to see more crime. So green is good, red is bad with some of those trending arrows, and that's why we added the colors in there. Nothing against red. I hope no one's offended by red being bad. Green is good. Talking about our goal of a safe community. We're continuing to expand our CERT trainings and building neighborhood-based CERT teams. Doing really well there. We're continuing to implement our plan of addressing staffing issues in our dispatch call center. Always a tight market for these. And we're continuing to facilitate the acquisition of sites to develop affordable housing for low-income households. More work going there as well. Again, there's a number of crimes, or sorry, they're not necessarily crime stats. Some of them are crime stats, some of them are fire-related stats. But you can see how we're trending on all of our numbers here. Oh, and I want to say something as well. For anyone who's really interested in these, if you go onto our website and you click on any of these categories, it will actually build out a map for, I think it goes back about two years, year and a half, two years, where you can watch each quarter's trending. And so it really starts to provide a better trend line as opposed to just a year-over-year. You can watch every quarter for the past year and a half to two years, and that will just continue to grow. And so you can really watch those trends begin to emerge. All available dynamically done on the website. More statistics as well. Moving on to our sense of place. One of our favorite things that we have all been working on a lot. We are almost at the end of reimagining the city's brand, identity, and story. And you're continuing to see that, bringing back the city seal here shortly. But we've launched our new logo, and you're starting to see that showing up on both apparel as well as all of our digital marketing. We have increased our large-scale recreation events. Hopefully, everybody will be able to make it out to the final concert tomorrow night on the south side of the Historic Civic Center. We are continuing to work on our feasibility study related to a performing arts venue. And we are continuing to improve the city website for ease of use. And if you haven't logged on recently, you should check it out. Our new branding is being rolled out now, so our website is continuing to change, and you'll notice a new look. Again, some of our statistics were not available when we first launched this, but we're now tracking these going forward. High-performing government. Always one of my favorite categories because we love to be in a government that serves its community well. We have completed our new employee orientation program. It's pretty cool. We've completed our review and revamp of our employee wellness program. We've completed streamlining and simplifying our recruitment process. And we have completed efforts to have both a state and federal lobbyist advocating for Coronan's interests, both here at the state level as well as federally. And we have now begun the very large and challenging project of replacing our enterprise resource planning system for the city. And that's usually about a two-year project. So overall, using our software, this will show you that we are about 70% of the way through implementing our strategic plan. And so that 70% is made up of both projects that were completed, which is about 44% of those, as you can see there. And we are at about 26% on track, and the remainder are underway. Some of them are not started or they're upcoming, and that's because they were programmed to begin in later years of the strategic plan. So by the numbers, always interesting to see how we're performing operationally. Community services, we trimmed more trees than before. Recreation participation with our recreation programs has gone up. Ridership in the Corona Cruiser, as well as our Dial-A-Ride is up. Library program participants are up, just to highlight a few of those things. When it comes to homelessness, our permanent housing placements is up at 78. We have more emergency shelter beds available. We have served 176 emergency shelter clients, which is also up. And we're also up with our city net street outreach and engagement context. So we've talked a lot about this. Virtually all of our numbers are up here. It's really, really positive to see this. Community engagement, again, social media impressions are up. Website visits up, social media audiences up. Our emails are open, people are opening a few less of those. But our total video views is way up. And this is an interesting one. If you were to go on our website and click on this, if memory serves, about a year and a half to two years ago, we had about 226, something like that, thousand video views. We're at 1.6 million. That's a tremendous increase, which I really think speaks to the quality, not just the quantity, but the quality of the videos that we're putting out. People want to watch them because they're more engaging. So kudos and shout out to our communications team. See Click Fix continues to be an excellent tool to use. And if you use it a lot, you'll notice every blue moon, something might not go perfectly. But if you look at these numbers just for the quarter, we're up again with over 3,600 total tickets submitted. We're still able to acknowledge those and close them in the same amount of time despite the numbers going up. We got more See Click Fix requests for graffiti. We removed more graffiti. We got more for Parkway Maintenance, which for anyone that knows how trees and bushes and grass grows, you know that we had a banner year for water, and we do see a lot more growth. And so there's a lot more tickets to try to get on top of all of that landscape maintenance as well as more street maintenance tickets. So all of those are up. Really pleased that people are continuing to use that tool. Economic development. We had more partnership events with the Corona Chamber. But otherwise, most of those numbers down a little bit, nothing drastic. And if you look at those as a trend, they're pretty steady. But year-over-year, they trended down a little bit for this quarter. Planning and development. Really happy to notice, if you look right through the middle of this, the second item down, you'll see that we processed 100% of our planning applications on time this quarter. 95% of our development service permits and plan checks were processed on time, which is a significant improvement. They're doing a great job. 99% of our building inspections on time, and 96% of our plan checks and permits in our plan check area. You'll also see in code compliance that the number of notices of violations were up at 445. But nice to see that citations remain consistent at 74. We always want, remember, we're not out there to find people for no reason. We're looking for compliance and where we're able to issue those notices of violation. But we don't have to find anybody because they've come into compliance. That's a win for everybody. So pleased with the work that they're doing as well, and they're staying very busy. In public works, you'll notice that our work orders are up. In traffic engineering, for our capital projects, the number of completed projects is up, which of course also correlates with the active number of CIP projects going down. Inspections are up for NPDES. Street maintenance work orders are up. And scheduled maintenance has also gone up in fleet, which is also a positive indicator because you're always looking for scheduled maintenance to be happening over unscheduled maintenance. Shows that we're getting ahead of that. So a lot of positive numbers is there as well. Finally, in public safety, you will notice that our medical calls were up. And then when it comes to responses to fire incidences as well as medical calls, we were faster in terms of overall response for incidences at six minutes or less for both fire and medical calls. On the police side, you'll notice calls for services were up. Arrests were up, vehicle citations were up. Oh, the goats, yeah, the goats. Like everybody else, they took a vacation. It was summertime, so they haven't been working. But a lot of those numbers show, again, on the public safety side, we're really busy and continuing to perform well and serve the community well. In utilities, shout out to billing and administration, trending up in every single category they improved in. So shout out to Tom Moody and his team in utilities. Did a great job here. You'll also notice that for utilities maintenance, they have improved in every category. Our electric utility power was on 100% of the time. Also another perfect score there. And we treated more water in our last quarter when it comes to water treatment, more water sampling, little less wastewater. I attribute that to a lot of dehydrated people. We're flushing less and sweating it out a little bit more. It's a joke. And our wastewater continues to meet standards. So internal support, accounting, again, improved with the number of invoices paid within 30 days. Hiring and human resources down a little bit, but pretty much stable there. Purchasing, not necessarily trending in all the directions that we want. We're continuing to work on that. We did see a small dip in the number of public record requests for our clerk's office. So a few less meetings and a few less requests there. A number that's always worth pointing out is when you look at IT, over 4.4 million potential malicious hacks blocked with our IT team. Those things, it's startling to see the number of times that we try to get hit by hackers. And we have an incredible team here that continues to protect the city and lead the way to keep us safe. So shout out to our IT department as well. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have any questions from the colleagues? Councilmember Steiner? No? Councilmember Cassius?
Yeah, I just have a question on slide 43. We showed our overall progress. This is strategic plan, overall progress, and we're at 70%. I know that not every project is the same. But do you anticipate, are we like on pace to complete all of the items we identified in the strategic plan by the time that our strategic plan is over?
So I wouldn't say we'll get every one of them done. There's a few projects that are behind schedule. Take asset management planning, for example. We're behind on that, just couldn't get the hiring done. But I would say the vast majority of those projects will be done on time as planned, with a couple of stragglers that had intervening variables that prevented us from being able to get them done when we planned on it. But incredible progress. We're on track with most everything that we set out to do. But some of those, again, are multi-year projects as well. And so when our strategic plan is done is a little bit of an open question. But on year five, we will have started or be underway with virtually everything. It's really, really good.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have one speaker card for this item.
I just wanted to point out one little section of it that I've gotten to watch kind of change, and that was the code compliance. I saw the notice of violations, things go up. And I don't really know exactly who issues all of them. But I do know that my friend April has been busting her butt in there, you know, and cranking them out. There's been a pretty noticeable difference in there since they've had somebody in the office knocking them out. That's what she's, she's in her cubicle all day, just sending out paperwork, calling people, and busting hump. So I'm sure she had something to do with the increase. I just want to thank her. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Moving on to item number 18, which is the designation of voting, of, sorry, designation of voting delegate for the 2023 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Brett Channing, Assistant City Manager, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The City of Corona, as you know, is a member of the California League of Cities. And the organization is having its annual conference coming up in September, on the September 20th through September 22nd, 2023, in Sacramento. And the conference wraps up with its annual business meeting on Friday, where each member of the League of California Cities is given the opportunity to vote on items that's brought before the General Assembly. So the League of California City requests that the City Council of all members designate a voting delegate to attend this business meeting and partake on behalf of the city. So at this time, staff is requesting or asking that the City Council designate a council member to serve as the city's voting delegate at the League of California Cities Conference. And at this moment, I believe Councilmember Speak is the only council member signed up to attend. So we'll leave that to your discretion as to who you want to select. But that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Channing. Yes, Councilmember Speak volunteered, call it volunteered, for the pleasure of being the delegate. And I'm waiting for a few things, but I would like to nominate myself to be the alternate.
There you go.
Didn't think that there would be much.
I really would love to attend. I just can't this time around, but...
I really wanted to go.
I will tell you, I mean, not that Sacramento was my favorite place to be in September, but the, and part of it, I waited until the agenda came out. And there are some really great conference little speeches I'm waiting to conference. I'm waiting to report back on that look really good. So Tony, you make it, and it'll be, it'll be fun.
Yep.
I wish I could join you guys. So does Jim. He really wishes he could join.
Next year, it'll be local, won't it?
They always go back.
Yeah, Long Beach usually.
But did you have anything you wanted to say, Ms. Mayor?
I wanted to go too.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the nomination of Councilmember Speak and as the delegate and myself as the alternate. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. It wasn't on my screen.
It's anarchy up there.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to item number 19, which is another administrative report, the possible re-agendizing of Veterans Memorial Direction. So I requested that this item be put back on the agenda. And the reason why is after we went through that process of voting last time, I just didn't feel super good about the voting process because, yeah, I didn't feel super good about it. And it's really, I don't want to lay blame on anybody. But one of the things that I think is really important, especially for Veterans Memorial, is that all of the veterans that would be able to utilize it have a good opportunity to weigh in on the three current designs. So myself and Councilmember Steiner met with our, whoops, our veteran community that are representatives that are sitting back there today, and I think that they're going to speak as well. But one of the things that we touched on was just how do we get our veteran community, whether it be with some of our American Legions, and utilize social media to get those designs out, to have a broader audience take a look at it and just give it the once-over, give us their opinion, and kind of go from there. So I asked that it be put back on an agenda. And so that's why we're here. So Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards on this?
Mayor, yes, we have four speaker cards for this item.
Okay, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and to all present. My name is Mary Ann Sherman, and I live in Corona. I have been involved with the discussion... I have been involved with the discussions regarding the renovation of the Veterans Area at City Hall, along with Tom, Johnny, Don, and Richard. A heartfelt thank you to the Mayor and Councilmembers for the effort they are putting into the Veterans Area, to the Veterans Area renovation. We all want this to be an honorable place, where veterans can go to reflect, also a place where schoolchildren can take field trips and possibly listen to presentations made by veterans, veterans, and learn about the veterans' military service. And also have an opportunity to ask the veterans questions. It'd be so cool to have those field trips and be able to get some veterans there to actually speak to the students. And they can get to learn about service and the reason why we have all these freedoms that we have. A special thank you to Tracy Martin, Capital Improvement Project Manager, for the City of Corona, for all the effort she has put in to make sure that this will be an honorable homage to the veterans of Corona, those who have passed and present. And a thank you to anyone else who is involved with this honorable project. On another note, thank you to the City of Corona for putting up the new military banner for my son, Air Force Brigadier General Thomas Sherman. It is placed going south on Main Street between Pueblo and Ontario. You'll probably see me there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Thank you very much again for allowing us veterans. The last time we were here, we were a little confused as to what we thought we needed and what we thought we had, so my apologies. Since then, I have reached out to not just Vietnam veterans, but I've reached out to the younger Americans, veterans who have fought in previous conflicts and battles. We've reached out to the Corona Vet Center. We've reached out to individuals, if they would send up from World War II. We have Otto back there, we have Desert Storm, we have various veterans from all conflicts who are appreciative. And thank you, guys, for helping us to make this happen for all our veterans. So thank you so very much. We appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Melanson, I'm a resident of Corona, have been for a long time. I was one of the original directors for the Corona Veterans Memorial Division. And I remember when we were doing the planning of it, one of the things we wanted was to include all veterans from, believe it or not, the Civil War, to the present day as it was then, to the future. Those who are joining the service yesterday, maybe, those who are Corona veterans. When I reference the Civil War, there is a gentleman who migrated out to the West Coast after the Civil War, lived in Corona, and is buried at Sunny Slope. And as far as we're concerned, he's our brother in arms. But we wanted to include something that came to pass that included everybody, the men and women of the service. And I just wanted to say on behalf of myself and a couple of other people, Ruben Rosso, who recently passed, who was our president at that time, sort of our sergeant major, also Bob Doctor, who was one of the directors. He fought, he was a Marine, fought World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. He included all of them, also Gary Tedeschi. These men are not present with us anymore, they are in spirit. But on behalf of those gentlemen who can't speak and myself, thank you for looking into this, to bringing this to the forefront, because I've talked to a lot of people in Corona. I used to have businesses in town, I've since sold them off, closed them down. But I still talk to a lot of people and ask them about if they know about the memorial. The majority of them have no clue there is one. So bringing this to the forefront, I just recently found out what was going to happen, I mean, real recently, that it was going to be possibly moved, flags put there, brought to the forefront. And I think Corona, doing this, really brings pride to the city. And so to everybody involved, I don't know who was, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Angelo Corso, Corona resident for over 20 years now. I'm one of those younger guys, Desert Storm, I was in from '82 to '93, got out for 20 years, decided to go back, and still serving today. I'm captain for my battalion, and I just wanted to say thank you for this. I was also one of the directors on the Corona Veterans Memorial Committee with Joseph Melanson and Johnny Griffiths, when this thing came about, and the other gentleman that Joe described also. So I just want to say thank you. It is a memorial for everybody, all veterans that have served, and also the Canines. Can't forget the Canines. So I just want to say thank you for revitalizing this and making it a little better. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, is there any more speaker?
Mayor, yes, we have one more speaker card.
So, I don't have skin in this game, but I watched the meeting, and you guys decided. And I want to thank you. It's a class move, you know, and it's a class move to open this up and have the people who do have skin in this game be able to be in the room and see, to bring it to a wider audience. And I heard that from you, you know, during the meeting, like, I don't know, you know, I want to know what they have to say, but there was like nine people here. There wasn't a very big crowd, because it's an afternoon meeting. And, you know, I really deeply, I don't think I've ever seen where, hey, we decided something, and then I want to undecided it and bring it out to a larger audience and, you know, let the people, you know, who really, it really matters to decide. And so I just, I want to publicly thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Do my council colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Steiner?
Yeah, I just kind of highlight a little bit more of what we talked about at the meeting that the mayor and I went to with the vets. We didn't want to necessarily start from scratch and, you know, get 8,000 opinions and try to come to one. I think that the committee that has been working on this for years now, I think it's widely accepted by the veterans that, whoa, those are three pretty good choices. And, you know, we should be able to send these three choices out to the community, the veteran community, and see if there's something in particular that they really like on one that we might be able to incorporate into the actual one that everybody likes, you know, the most. So that's what we talked about, sending just those three items to our Legion Halls and our different veteran communities and saying, hey, what do you think? Tell us what you think.
Yeah. And to no fault of anybody, I think there was just some miscommunication, like, you know, like Johnny was saying, they didn't know that they were going to be making a vote that night, and we just wanted to make sure, because none of us up here are veterans. So this memorial isn't for us, or it's up to us to help decide, but our direction comes from our veteran community. And they are, you know, the veterans that were working on this were also very interested in, you know, getting, A, more input from the veteran community. None of us are interested in delaying this project, we're, we just want to make sure that of the choices that we have, that we've got the, we've got the input of all the folks that need to have input, because it's their memorial. So, Ms. Ellis, I'm not sure, do we need to take a vote, or what is it that you'd like us to do, proceed?
So, the idea is, anytime you've made a decision on an item and someone wants to bring it back, the council should vote to re-agendize that item. So technically, what would happen is you'd vote to do that, and if the council wished to proceed, we would place that on a subsequent agenda, so that you could have a substantive conversation about that. Feels like we may have just had that substantive conversation, and if there's consensus and the council wants to, you can simply provide that direction tonight to go back out and do a little bit more community engagement, and we can do that if you'd like to. If you feel like you'd like a chance to talk about that more, we could always re-agendize it as well.
Okay. I think that we'd like, I think the motion that I'd like to see is that we get some more, we get some more feedback from our veteran community, you know, possibly utilizing social media, obviously our great American Legions that we have here, and bring it back to an agenda very soon.
Sure.
Not next one, but maybe early September. That way, there's a little bit of time to get some of that data.
And to clarify, it's taking out those three designs and just getting feedback on those. Okay, thank you. We understand the direction.
Is everybody good with that?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to legislative matters. Boards and Commission, reports from City Council commissioners and staff for the Library Board of Trustees, there are none. The Planning and Housing Commission, conditional use permit number 2023-0002 to establish 50 apartments on 2.96 acres located on the west side of Temescal Canyon Road and on the north and south sides of Fashion Drive, and the commercial designation of the Dos Lagos specific plant, applicant Patritz of Rexco Development. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Okay, come on down.
Joe Morgan, 206 year old, despite what everybody thinks, I'm not necessarily always looking forward to coming down here this many times, but I haven't been a fan of certain views of the Toronto thing, and I just wanted to, I want to thank Mr. Tritts, because I think he might not, in the long run, have been a fan of it, and I just, that little square, that last little square that this is going to go on, apparently has been a tough sale, you know. I think I and other people would prefer that there's more commercial and more, you know, you know, I would, you know, in my heart of hearts, probably housing and apartments probably isn't necessarily what I want, but while I didn't like Toronto, when I looked at it from the freeway, it's actually quite nice. I mean, I've been in a couple of meetings down there, it's friggin' beautiful inside there. It's really nice inside. And so seeing that, and then seeing the plan to the planning commission, I think this is going to be nice. I think it's going to be a nice deal. And I want to thank him, because he's going to do some facade changes and kind of soften the thing up a little bit. And, you know, I don't know where that came from, if that was his idea or somebody suggested it, but what I've seen from Mr. Tritts over the years, is he does actually listen to people, and he does actually change and kind of tweak and redirect stuff when it becomes, things become an issue or somebody has a concern, and I just want, I want to point that out. So anyways, I just think this is a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other speaker cards, Ms. Edwards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay. Would my colleagues like to take no action or set the item for review?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted a quick, a quick comment. Just wanted to say thank you again to Mr. Tritts for, I know he worked hard to try and get to this point, and there was a lot of push from several folks to try and find a commercial use for this, and I know he pulled every string that he could, and I agree that it's a, it's a nice compliment to what's there and happy to take no action.
Okay. Okay, no action. Okay, Parks and Recreation Commission, there are none. Regional meetings, just one today. An update from Councilmember Wes Speak on the Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority SAPA. What a great acronym.
Actually, it's even better one. It's a subset group called OWOW. That's the One Water, One Watershed Group. So I know you're excited about this, it's a new one for me, it was.
I'm sorry, one second. Ms. Edwards, next time, could you please put the OWOW acronym on the agenda?
First, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Casillas for voting, to have me cover this for WRCOG. I appreciate that.
Always happy to vote to give you more work, Wes.
It's a, it's a good group. Their stated goal is basically to act as an administrator for the state-approved Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, which is exciting as that is, that since, let's see, 1990, over $240 million has been directed to that plan. Basically, it's to really focus on improvement, the water quality, and regional management of the Santa Ana River. So I was very happy to sit at my first meeting. It's two, two representatives from the Western Riverside County, from municipal government, two county supervisors from, one from Riverside County, one from San Bernardino County, and one from Orange County, and then two folks from Orange County as well, Orange County Municipal Government, and then including a industry person and a conservation person. So I was very happy to get my, to my first meeting underway, and we just covered a couple things. One, there's an Integrated Climate Adoption, Adoption Resilience Plan, some grant program money that we're going after, it's a $175 million program, and we are applying for about $10 million to that, which will go toward some additional funding for. And then also, there was a presentation about a call for projects through Riverside County Flood Control, and there was two projects, one that were granted or one that were internal, and then also another one for another agency, Western Water, I think. So very happy to see those go forward and looking forward to more OWOW meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. OWOW. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Ms. Raymond, do you have any comments?
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session for the item listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the team again tonight. Anytime we do a quarterly update, I think it's worth recognizing how much work's going on, and I wanted to thank everybody that you see here, who represents the leadership for all of our teams, as well as all the team members themselves. They did an incredible job, and I couldn't be more pleased and grateful to have this team pushing our city forward. So I wanted to give them a shout out for that.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have an advanced travel request for Councilmember Jim Steiner to attend meetings at the California State Capitol. Does any council member want a staff report on this item?
Yeah, Jim, really? You're going to attend meetings?
Well, the fun ones. No, yeah, so I represent the city on the Santa Ana River Local Advisory Group here, and the goal for the visit to Sacramento by the members of the Santa Ana River Conservancy Local Advisors delegation is to represent the Santa Ana River and make a strong case for funding to be included in the climate resiliency bond, that is information, in formation, being put together. The primary objective is to ensure that $40 million in the Assembly Version Bill, which is AB 1567, remains there. Don't look at me like that, Jackie. And that the Senate version, SB 867, includes this funding as well. It is important, it's important to have a seat at the table on this, you guys. If we get this funding allocated, you know, that'll then give us an opportunity to lobby and try to solicit some of that funds to complete the trails, the trail connections along the river through Corona. So when I put this on the agenda, we were still in the early stages of putting various meetings together, and I thought, well, I better ask for two nights, because I didn't have another option to get to council before then. So that has changed a little bit since. So we have meetings scheduled right now, just on Wednesday, August 16th, with Senator Umberg, with Senator David Mann, with Assembly Member Valencia, Assembly Speaker Robert Rivas, Budget Director, Senator Ben Allen's Policy Consultant, Tina Adelina, and then, well, we're going to work on dropping off some literature to our four representatives up in the legislature.
Are you drafting everything?
Are you drafting these things?
No, of course not. Anyways, I don't think I'm going to need both nights. I don't think I'm going to need a single night. My goal is to fly up the Wednesday morning, the 16th in the morning, and do a turnaround to try to get back for the council meeting, because we have a big item on that agenda, I think, and I want to be here to talk about it. So that is the plan right now. Yeah, yeah. Go up that morning, come back that day, and try to get us money for the, for the Santa Ana River. Yeah. So it'd probably be less than half of what's being. So it'd probably be less than half of what's being asked for.
Okay. Well, I think it's noble of you, Jim, and--
Well, you know, I like to volunteer--
I appreciate it, unlike my colleagues here who are mocking you at--
Yeah. No, it's just, it's fun to be on this side of it.
I hate that.
It's almost as a cost.
It's just a day trip. So I might be a little late to the meeting. I'm probably going to miss closed session, but I'm going to try to be here at 16.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I appreciate it. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
I guess I'll. Who made the mo, how can you second if no one has made the motion?
He was making the motion.
Oh, good God.
Okay, please vote.
Can you repeat all the names of the people you're visiting?
Okay. That item passes five to nothing. Okay, do my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember speak.
Just, just a couple of things. One, I wanted to say what a great job that staff has done with our summer concerts. I was able to make the No Duh concert last week, and it was just, it was fantastic, and the crowds are just, are huge. And just want to say, please thank your, the team for doing such a great job, and remind everybody that tomorrow night's our final one with probably my favorite. I know that Yachty by Nature is the mayor's favorite, but Stone Soul, we're hearing some good Motown on the South Lawn, or on the Hasty Sea Lawn is going to be great. So I'm really excited about that. I did have my chance to meet with our new federal lobbyist, and I gave him my wish list of other people's money that I'd like to get, and they were, I think, a little bit overwhelmed, because I didn't stop talking, but, strangely enough, but they actually had some ideas, especially for ones that were looking at finding money for our trail system, finding money for transportation. In fact, you know, saying thank you again to Congressman Calvert for finding $4 million for us for the Ontario crossing, undercrossing. And they had some ideas on where to go for some, including some paving money for unpaved roads, which we have just a few. So I was really excited to hear about that, and hopefully we can, they'll bring home the bacon, so to speak. And then I wanted to, I know we touched on it earlier, the city manager talked during the update, that cyclical fixes is, it's amazing how well people have really jumped on it. In fact, I asked earlier for the city manager to give me kind of year-over-year numbers for graffiti. We're actually down, we're down about 600 reports, which really, but we're also up in the amount that we're covering. So staff is actually going out and preemptively covering or noticing those things, so it's really appreciated. Seeing those numbers go down, especially on the reporting side, is a great thing. Landscape maintenance, of course, has went up by over 100, and I think a lot of that's due to the fact that everything is growing. We have a lot of weeds. We have a lot of trees that are, that are growing out of control. So I know that, I want to say thank you to folks to continue to use the app and to staff to, I know it's a, it's a tall order. So I want to urge some patience, and I would say, overall, I hear nothing but really positive things. Occasionally, like the city manager said, we do miss, you know, something will slip through the cracks, but I'm really happy to see that residents will remind us. And I go out of my way to thank people that report things in District 5, and I want to say thank you again for doing that. Thank you to staff as well. And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could, it'd be okay to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Scott Waddell. Scott was a general giant. Those of you that had ever met Scott, he was a big man, a very large, a very large, tall man, but really in his heart was a good man. Definitely volunteered. You would see him at all kinds of different events. He passed away at a very young age, just a really sad thing. He participated pretty extensively with the Corona Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, Corona Life Services. He was the Executive Leadership Roundtable and contributed pretty significantly to their, the work they did at Santana Park, remembering folks who had passed away from fentanyl overdose. And even though he didn't have a person that touched him personally, he, you could see in his eyes, in his feeling, how much he really wanted to heal people. He was a good guy, and I was very, very sad to hear him pass, and I want to say to his wife, Michelle, and his three children, to, our prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicely stated, Wes. I just wanted to thank Corona Police Department. I was able to do another ride-along with them last Thursday. Specifically, I want to thank Sergeant Hubbard for hosting me. If you ever get an opportunity, or just make an opportunity to try to get a ride-along set up, it'll really show you, you know, what they have to deal with. And it's hardcore, and it's challenging, so just the men and women of the Corona Police Department do a great job. If you get an opportunity to do a ride-along, jump on it. Thank you.
I also met with the federal lobbyist, and I really didn't have much to say, and just said, if you haven't met with Wes yet, just deal with him. And then Stone Soul tomorrow will be really good. I encourage one and all to go. And last but not least, I hope our mayor and council member talk about the new ink that they got. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, you know, our summer concert series has just been fantastic. I mean, it just seems like band, or week after week, it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, that the community is just coming out. I made it to the first two, and I was unable to make it to No Duh, which just kind of really bothered me, but I saw the pictures, and the crowd just looked amazing. Stone Soul is my mom's favorite, so we'll be there tomorrow night. I did have a chance to meet with the federal lobbyist. Unfortunately, it was right after Wes, and so there was a little bit of real tears. And I said, well, if you've met with Wes, then the gist of it is, is go out and find us money, and that's kind of what they specialize in. And so that's, that was really good to hear. Wanted to say congratulations to our police department. They had a great national night out last night. Good job. And we are going to adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be August 16th, and we will be adjourning it in honor of Scott Waddell. Thank you.